Good evening. Thank you. We're going to wait just a couple of minutes. We have a certain number of people that are still getting through the security. But at this time, I'd like to welcome all of our students. You picked a good one to join us this evening. So we'll wait just a couple more minutes till we make sure everybody who needs to be here.
Wendy's here. Couldn't tell you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Now that we have all made our way into the room, thank you for your patience. I'd like to call our September 2024 Planning Commission meeting to order. If you will, please call roll.
Dana Camp?
Here.
Nonnette Reese?
Here.
Wendy Birmingham?
Here.
David Wisdom?
Here.
Joseph A. Strope?
Here.
Theo Chancellor?
Here.
Jennifer Stevens?
Here.
Oscar Mosley?
Walker Davis?
Here.
Thank you. Before we start this evening, I would like to give a brief overview, since we have a room full this evening, about this public meeting of the Auburn City Planning Commission. The commission will be presented with agenda items by the city staff. Representative for the agenda item will then have an opportunity to make comments and/or answer specific questions from the commission. If the agenda item has a public hearing, one will be opened and everyone can address the commission about the agenda item at hand. We want everyone to be heard. We do ask that you keep your comments to five minutes and relevant to the case at hand. After everyone has spoken, the public hearing will be closed. Representative and staff will then have an opportunity to answer any questions and respond to any issues brought to our attention during the hearing. The commission vote will be based on state and local laws, the Comprehensive Plan 2030, and the good of the community. In addition, I'd like to summarize the role and responsibility related to the approval of subdivision plats. By Alabama statute, a municipal planning commission such as ours is the final approval authority for subdivision plats. The commission acts as an administrative body and is bound by the limitation constrained in state laws, city zoning ordinance, and the subdivision regulations previously adopted by the commission. While public hearings are required on most plats, please understand that the commission's authority is strictly limited to confirming that the plat meets or exceeds the specific requirements codified in laws and regulations. Please do not forget to sign in and state your address for the record when speaking. Now, let's get started. I'd like to open for citizens' communication. This is in a moment in which you have the opportunity to speak about something not on tonight's agenda. If you would like to come forward now about something that may not be on this one, we'd like to hear you now. Seeing no one, we will move on to old business. We have an annexation for Mitchell Farms.
Thank you. So just kind of like we were discussing the packet lunch. This is cleaning up a prior annexation that was approved several meetings ago. And so one of the things that, just one of the things in the annexation policy is that there must be a one-foot overhang to meet the contiguity requirements, to meet the requirements for annexation. And so what is presented in the exhibits tonight is the inclusion of a 20-square-foot overhang of the property to give contiguity to the city limits for the parcel to meet annexation requirements. And so what happens is, this is an updated legal description that includes that 20-foot overhang. The only reason that it is a separate visual is that 20 square feet would not show up very well on the scale with that being 127 acres. And so that's why it's specifically drawn out and separated from the rest of them. That way you can see and that way it's legible. But with that, that was the only thing that we wanted to show you all, that the legal description has been updated and that what you all approved is actually compliant with the City of Auburn annexation policy.
Okay, thank you. It's an annexation that does not require a public hearing. Commissioners?
Move to approve case AX 2024-020 Mitchell Farms.
Second.
There's a condition.
With condition.
I have a motion and a second to approve the annexation for Mitchell Farms with conditions. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Move to the consent agenda. It has three items on it currently, and we have two final plats and an annexation, and the approval of the minutes from Packet and regular meeting in August.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Okay, new business.
Good afternoon. The first item of new business is a long-awaited item, which is an amendment to the subdivision regulations. Mainly, the revisions are for a number of items that were, have been on planning's list for several years. And those include revisions to the definitions in the subregs to align with the Engineering Design and Construction Manual, clarification of a flag lot, application procedures that are reflective of staff's current practices, incorporation of standards for private access drives, or also private streets, extension of preliminary plats so they do not expire while the project is constructing their infrastructure. If they have DRT approval and are constructing the infrastructure, then the plat approval will automatically extend another 18 months. And we've also increased a number, the number of lots that are allowed for an administrative subdivision from four to six. And that's the maximum allowed that the state allows. And you had a supplement to your staff report for this, just for some clarification. Nothing really changed for the private access drives. It was just a little more clearer. So if you have any questions or want to discuss anything further, we can do that.
Commissioners, do you have any questions for staff or anyone?
I have one question.
Yes.
Page eight, item D7 regarding the extension.
Mm-hmm.
The statement is, "Construction of infrastructure is underway and progressing accordingly." It's a little broad statement, in my opinion, and doesn't really say who determines that? Who determines that it's progressing accordingly?
Well, that would be determined by staff. I mean, if...
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Anyone else? This does require a public hearing.
It does. Thank you.
We may have more questions after that.
Okay.
I'd like to open the public hearing for the subdivision regulations amendment, if anyone would like to come forward and speak to us about it, or have any questions about it. Seeing no one, we'll close the public... Oh, oh, I'm sorry. Maybe quick.
I know there are some changes being made in regards to the definition on flag lots. Did we...
Excuse me?
Yeah. Brett Vasquen, 1655, here in point. On the flag lot definition, I know there was some of that language. Can we clarify what that language was on the flag lots, on where it narrows?
Yeah, so I guess the intent was that, I think we, I think what we ended up leaving it as was 30 feet at the frontage. And then I guess you, then you started with it that you always had to be able to build a house in the STEM.
The minimum lot width.
Right, right, right.
If that's all it is, I'm good. Thank you.
Great. Anyone else? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, do you have any questions? I have one. At what point will this be codified and in place to approve against or for?
Yeah, I guess after you're proven, so I mean, we'll start enforcing at the next meeting, pretty much. So tomorrow, as soon as we start having pre-abs, there will be subject to this.
Okay. Great. Okay, commissioners?
Move to approve subdivision regulations amendment.
Second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. MEMS Trail.
All right, so it's the MEMS Trail 15th edition. The request was a preliminary plat approval for 157 lot performance subdivision. All right, so the subject property is comprised of approximately 65.28 acres and is undeveloped with dense vegetation. There's currently one access point on Mill Creek Road, and the property is surrounded by subdivisions like MEMS Land's Fountain View, Arbor Woods, and Bridle Creek Estates. This is, so the plat in front of you all, this is in accordance with the master development plan. There are 68 townhome lots, 89 single-family lots, and five open space lots. The proposed gross density for the space of MEMS Trail is 2.4 billion units an acre, which is below the maximum gross density of DDH, which is five and a half billion units an acre. The proposed plan is required to provide 30% of open space, which equals to 19.6 acres of open space, and the plat shows 36.2 acres of open space, which is 55% of the gross area. If you all remember, one of the things that they talked about in their presentation to the planning commission was that they were never going to reach the proposed density and that they're always going to exceed the open space just because how steep a slope is just across the site within this BDD. So with that, I'd turn it over to you all for any questions.
Okay. Is there a representative here?
Happy to answer any questions.
This does require a public hearing. I would like to open that at this time. If you'd like to speak about this agenda item, MEMS Trail. Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing. Commissioners, do you have any questions, comments, motions?
Need to approve.
Case PP 2024-34.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Welcome back.
Thank you. All right, this item is for preliminary plat approval for a 10-lot commercial subdivision on 282 acres on Beehive Road and east of Biltmore Lane. It is zoned primarily industrial, and a small portion of it, relative to the size of the property, is outside of the city limits. As I mentioned, 10 lots and a new right-of-way will take access off of Biltmore. And off of that right-of-way, an additional new right-of-way going north-south to Lot 10, which has access off of Beehive Road. This green area here is a 75-foot undisturbed buffer, and it does back up against the residences and other properties that are to the west. In addition to that 75-foot undisturbed buffer, there is an additional 25-foot no-build line, and that was part of the condition of approval for rezoning, which occurred earlier this year on... Part of the property, and then last year on, I think, 90 acres of the property, when it was annexed and rezoned. We do recommend approval, and we did receive several correspondence from residents, and I believe you were copied on a number of those. And primarily, it had to do with, from the residents that were, sorry, on this area here.
With the nature of their comments, any things stand out?
Primarily, it was the distance between the residences and the... Primarily, it was the distance between the residences and the industrial property.
I've got a question.
It's me.
Can I ask? Why is that lot, and I know there's a stream on it, why is it outside the city?
I do not know the answer to that, but the applicant's representative can respond to that. But it is, uh, oh, it is primarily part of the stream and the buffers.
Okay. Anything else for Ms. Robinson? Okay. Does the applicant want to speak now, or do you want to wait till after public hearing?
We'll wait for her.
Okay, thank you. This West Tech Park NX2 does require a public hearing. If you would like to speak about this agenda item, please move forward. Okay, no one. We will close the public hearing at this time. Commissioners? Oh, I'm so sorry. I was gonna ask one question, if you don't mind. To Ms. Camp's point, why is it outside of the city limits?
That's so the property was purchased in several portions, I think, and I don't know. The portion that's not that hasn't been annexed is to the east. That portion there was bought in a different track. It will be annexed at some point, just has not been brought in. It's mostly wetlands and not buildable. And so it's not a part of the preliminary plat that's being requested for now. And just to add to previous comments with respect to the building setbacks, the 100-foot there as well as the buffer, in addition to that, the representatives of the industrial development board spoken with the owners that have houses there, in addition to a basically 10x required buffer that has been agreed to, as well as a vegetative landscaping plan that's been established, the IDB will also be building an eight-foot fence that runs behind the two properties that have residences close to the line, close to that eastern line. So, I mean, IDB has agreed to go above and beyond what's required to substantial expense just to make sure that there are no issues, you know? So 100-foot, no-build zone, 75-foot buffer, eight-foot fence on portions of the lot that back up to residences, so.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any other questions for anyone?
Move to approve case PP 2024-35.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Good evening. This next request is for preliminary plat approval for a 48-lot performance subdivision. It also includes a waiver to our subdivision regulations to subdivide off of a private street. The subject property is located at 1287 Ogletree Road in the Development District Housing Zoning District with an overlay of the planned development district designation. It is within the Moores Mill PDD. The subject property is down here. It's Area L of the PDD. It was brought into the PDD boundary back in October of 2023. The subdivision consists of 43 townhouse lots, four open space lots, and one lot for a private drive. When the property was brought into the PDD, it was initially contemplated as a multiple-unit development on one lot of record, and since that time, the applicant has requested to subdivide into fee simple lots, which requires that lots front on a public right-of-way. However, they want that street to remain private, and the HOA will be responsible for its maintenance. The plat is consistent with the master development plan for the PDD. The density is 3.83 dwelling units an acre, where eight dwelling units an acre are allowed for DDH within a PDD, and they are providing 33% of open space. Engineering plans have been approved for the project, and the infrastructure is under development. Staff recommends approval of the subdivision and the waiver to subdivide off a private street.
And that would go back to the regulations we just updated?
This would be considered under our current regulations.
Okay. Do you want us to vote separately on plat and waiver?
Correct.
Okay. This applicant is here. Okay. This does require a public hearing for Reeves Town Homes. If you would like to come forward, I'd like to open the public hearing now. Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing. Commissioners, we do need to do this in two votes.
Could I hear from the applicant about why they want to keep these private streets?
Sure. Advocate.
Yeah, most of our conversation today has just been with it being private streets. I think a public street has to have a 50-foot right-of-way, and ours is a little bit smaller at 30-foot. So if we had to do it as a public street, we wouldn't we wouldn't be able to we wouldn't be able to subdivide it as a public street. It wouldn't meet the width requirements in regards to the additional right-of-way requirement. So that's the biggest difference. Everything else is the same. I would note that when we got the putt approved, we have the putt approved for about, I think, 12 more units than we're doing. So we're actually doing less units than we, you know what I mean, than we got approved. It's just there's been changes in the market with it's much easier on being able to do these as fee simple as opposed to multiple unit. They're considered condos and insurance. There's a bunch of stuff like that that's kind of created this issue. So happy to answer any other questions.
Any other questions for?
No.
No. Commissioners? Questions, motions?
What do you want to vote on first?
You make the motion.
Okay. Well, I will make a motion to grant the waiver to allow private drive to constitute mandatory street frontage.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the waiver for Reeves Town Homes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Now for the preliminary plat approval?
I move to approve preliminary preliminary plat 2024-38.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next.
I'm back.
The next request is for the final plat approval for the previous preliminary plat approval you just considered. It is 43 townhouse lots, four open space lots, and one lot for a private drive, and we recommend approval.
Thank you. Commissioner says it does not require a public hearing for a flat or plat.
Move to approve FP 2024-015 with conditions.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
This next request is for a preliminary plat approval for a 73-lot performance subdivision. It is located west of North College Street at its intersection with Highway 280. It is the Bottle PDD, and it's split-zoned CDD and DDH. The subject property is here at the terminus of Bottle Way. Phase one was approved here in December of 2023. This plat is consistent with the master development plan for the Bottle. The PDD has a total of 317 residential lots and eight acres of commercial space. After this plat, there will be 199 residential lots remaining. There was an incentive with the PDD to reduce the minimum lot width for single-family lots from 50 to 40 feet, and this plat represents that. The exchange that they provided was to they offered rear-loading garages and entries for the townhouse lots and commercial space, and we recommend approval.
Thank you. Is the applicant here?
Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. This preliminary plat does require a public hearing for North Gate Phase Two. I'd like to open the public hearing at this time. Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing. Commissioners?
Move to approve preliminary plat 2024-39.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
And next is the final plat approval for the previously considered subdivision. I think I forgot to mention that this is 30 single-family lots, 38 twin-home lots, three open space lots, one open, excuse me, one outlot, and then a lot for future development, and we recommend approval.
Thank you. Commissioners, says the final plat does not require a public hearing?
Move to approve final plat 2024-16.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
This request is a preliminary plat approval request for an eight-lot performance subdivision. The property is located at 544 and 556 East Glen Avenue in the corridor redevelopment District East. This is a redevelopment project. There is currently a office on one of these lots and a residential residence on the other. It'll be subdivided into eight townhome lots. The allowed density for this zone is 16 dwelling units an acre, and this development is less than that at nine dwelling units an acre. Staff has no major concerns with this request. We do have some notational notes regarding cross-access. The site plans on only having one access along East Glen Avenue to serve all lots, and there will be a shared access drive that connects the lots, and there'll be cross-access connection to lots east and west for future development.
So parking is in the rear?
Uh, yes, ma'am.
Where's the access to Glen?
It's gonna be in between lots four and five.
Okay.
It's the...
Even for lots six, seven, and eight, townhouses are up front in the...
So I believe the townhouses are all gonna be up front. The developer can confirm that, but this cross-access easement will be extended to serve all the lots.
Oh, okay. Okay.
And I received no correspondence to the public regarding this.
Thank you.
I just want to be clear on this. On the where we have the access road in the back that'll that'll provide east-west access there, that'll serve all of these lots, we're gonna provide cross-access to the west, right back to Ryan Street. To the east, there's about 12 feet of grade change. We will we will do our best, but we're probably gonna have a retaining wall over there that's gonna prevent cars from from crossing between our easternmost property line and the one next door. So I just I just want that out there that we'll have a cross-access easement in the back. It'll serve all of us, and when the guy's next door to the west, he'll be able to connect through to Ryan Street. But to the east, it's not likely that that is gonna take place just because there's so much grade change. We're gonna do the best to mitigate it to what we can do to make us work, but then help people get to it from the to the east of us. Okay? So just want to make sure everybody's clear on that.
Yeah, we've tried really hard for it to all connect, but we're not in charge of it.
I...
Okay, this does require a public hearing, so I would like to open that at this time for the East Glen Town Homes. Nobody. Okay. I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners?
Move to approve preliminary plat 2024-40.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next request is a preliminary plat approval for a 20-lot conventional subdivision. The property is located at 943 Lee Road 57, also known as Willis Turk Road in Lee County. The current property is approximately 107.8 acres, and there's a proposal to subdivide the property into 20 lots for residential, single-family detached use. All lots are anywhere from three acres in size, which is the minimum for planning jurisdiction outside of city limits, and Lot 26 is the largest, which is a outlot that is 26 acres. This plat shows a configuration of lots resembling flag lots. However, these lots meet the minimum road frontage at both the new road being created here, which is 60 feet. All lots meet the 60-foot minimum requirement, and as well as the cul-de-sac where the minimum requirement for frontage is 25 feet. Now, the subdivision regulations that was just recently approved would broaden the classification of flag lots, which may have impacted this subdivision. Nonetheless, this was submitted at the time where the prior subdivision regulations were in place. There is a so there's several comments for the plat, mainly notational. There's several notational comments. However, engineering also has a comment that the proposed road exceeds the maximum length for cul-de-sacs. The maximum length is 1,000 feet for lots less than for roads that serve less than 20 lots, and they are showing 1,100-foot-long cul-de-sac. So our process is to recommend approval for preliminary plots, but that is a note that I thought was relevant to share. So I'm happy to answer any other questions.
If it's approved with conditions, what do you want us to do with that?
I'm sorry, what was that?
If it's approved with conditions...
So...
What are they to do with that comment?
Yes. You saying to include a condition to address the cul-de-sac?
Do they need to shorten it and reconfigure? Is that if it's approved with all these conditions, is that the... Do they have to?
So for preliminary plots, these comments would be addressed prior to final plat, and then we can make a
Condition.
Condition at that time.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
I've got a question too. On, if you go back a slide to the... So is that enough? Is that contiguous? Should we, you know, it annex someday if I'm looking at that, that...
So it is my understanding that the property owner has intentions to annex this property into the city, and they will be working with property owners along Willis Turk to provide a con...
Contiguity.
Exactly.
Contiguity.
Exactly.
Contiguity.
Exactly.
Well, I mean, as it stands now, is that enough?
As it stands now...
I mean, is that touch?
There is not, there is not, uh...
That's what I wanted to know.
Annexation allowances right now. And there was several correspondence with public, just inquiring about this request. It's currently agricultural use, and so they were, I'm just curious, and I didn't see, receive too many opinions, but yeah, a lot of inquiries, so.
I also want to ask another question. I guess I just want to clarify what was discussed here before. Does, the way this is configured, does it meet current city guidelines?
In relation to flaglots and lot configuration, I'd say...
Well, just, like, is there anything that does not meet?
That would be the cul-de-sac being too long. The, the maximum length for cul-de-sac streets is one thousand feet, and this is eleven hundred. So that is a note that engineering addressed that, wouldn't need to be addressed during final plat.
So if we would annex that at a future date, we'd be annexing a non-conforming development?
If it was recorded as is, correct.
Just to clarify, if this property were to be developed in the county, we still have purview over the design review along with the county.
Right.
So they would have to meet the most stringent of those requirements, depending on which jurisdiction it stays in.
And that's ours. That's the city.
It would likely be ours in this case.
Okay, thanks.
But as it sits in the county at this time, with jurisdiction, it's still three-acre lot minimum?
Correct.
Applicant is here.
We should, we should have the public hearing.
Oh, you, you do.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You want...
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Sure, we can do that first. Yes. I would like to open the public hearing now for H&amp;G Stables preliminary plat. If you would like to speak on this agenda item. Yes, sir. Please come in and state your name and address and sign in afterwards. Thank you.
Good evening.
Hi.
My name is Nikke Willis, address seven ninety-eight Leroy Fifty-Seven, directly across from H&amp;G Horse Stables. My biggest concern is traffic and public safety. With this being a public, with this being a twenty-lot subdivision, primarily this is, I lived here all my life. I'm a third-generation, uh, from Gordon Willis, one of the biggest landowners on that road. And, uh, with public safety, we, we have a, already have a, uh, trailer park up the street where traffic has really became a nuisance. And with twenty homes coming into the neighborhood, that's another public nuisance on a primarily two-mile road. And I have kids, three, eleven, and twenty. And my kids having traffic coming in and out, up and down, all day, all night, primarily we can't even sleep at night right now with the addition to the trailer park coming in with traffic up and down the road. Twenty-acre lot, primarily looking at another bout, hundred people coming into, into the community. So that's gonna, that's my biggest thing. And also with my home, I built my home, and with this coming in, what, what would my home look like opposed to these homes? Will it goes up in value or will it go down in value? I need to know all of these things with this subdivision coming in. So, uh, those are my biggest concerns, and, uh, I'll leave it there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Willis, will you sign in? Anyone else who would like to speak on this agenda item? Okay, seeing no one, I would like to close the public hearing, and if the applicant can help us answer some questions.
In regards to road length, we had talked about that. We had talked about a waiver. You know, the max length's a thousand for twenty. We have a lot less on this road, so we were gonna ask for a waiver. If, if we don't get the waiver, we'll just have to shorten the road, right? So that, that's how we'll address that. In regards to annexation, that'll be next month when we come in and annex. We had to submit, we had to get subdivision approval because right now we're in the county, and we're within the planning jurisdiction, and we're subdividing more than four lots. So we had to come before you, whether we're in the city, the county, doesn't matter. So when we annex into the city, or if we, you know, when we annex into the city, we'd come into rural, we'd be rural zone, just like everything else out there, so it'd be three-acre lot minimums anyways. In regards to the property owner across the street, you know, we anticipate that this is, these homes are gonna be in the million-plus frame, so I don't think, don't have to worry about property values going down up there. In regards to the total number of lodge... Yeah, so we have about twenty, twenty actual lots that will be homes. There's a couple of open-space lots, so there's, there's not much there. There's a big lake and stuff that will, that will be utilized in the back as a public space for the, for the neighborhood. But happy to answer any questions any of the commissioners may have.
Commissioners, any questions?
Will there be a traffic study required? Because maybe that'll give us some insight into...
No.
This is a county road, isn't it?
Yeah, it's a county road. I mean, typically, a traffic study's not required until seventy units.
Yeah.
Unless the county...
Yeah, unless the county, unless...
Unless the county, yeah.
Unless the county wants to do it, okay.
Or, or requires it, right? Because we'll have to go to the county, because it's a county-maintained road. You know, the county will have to approve the driveways, even though we'll permit through, I mean, essentially, we're having to permit through both the whole way, so.
Okay, commissioners?
I'm trying to imagine what that cul-de-sac would look like and all the flaglots would look like when you cut a hundred feet off the, off that. I don't, I don't see it happening. I think you, I think there's a lot, lot of... He drew it at eleven hundred feet for a reason, and that's because as flags could work. Just a lot of, I don't know, there's a good reason why we're not making these things legal anymore.
And then do you want to approve with conditions? And do you want to make a motion?
No, I don't, I'm not quite sure yet.
Okay, all right. Anyone else?
Move to approve preliminary plat twenty twenty-four forty-one.
Period?
Period.
Period. We have a motion for approval. I do not have a second. Would anyone else like to make a motion?
This being a preliminary plat, I recommend you, you do have a motion either to approve or deny.
Guess I'll approve, I will motion to deny.
Second? I have a motion and a second to deny preliminary plat for H&amp;G subdivision. Roll call, please.
None at Reese?
No.
Dana Kemp?
No.
Bill Chancellor?
No.
David Wistum?
No.
Wendy Birmingham?
No. Wait, I'm confused. I'm confused.
No.
No, is disagreeing with denial. Okay. Okay.
Wendy Birmingham?
Yes.
Joseph A. Stroup?
Yes.
Jennifer Stevens?
No.
Walker Davis?
Yes.
Thank you.
What was the count?
Failed.
Failed.
Three to...
Three to five.
This will go to anywhere else?
No, 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 no. I guess, uh, so, no, no, no. So since the preliminary plat wasn't approved, they'll have to, they'd have to resubmit like a different one.
It was approved.
We, we denied the motion to deny.
It was approved.
Do we need to make another motion to approve?
All right, all right, all right. So the motion to deny failed, so then it passed.
That's correct.
Hey, y'all, y'all gotta stop dealing with these negatives. Okay, so the motion passed, yeah, yeah, yeah. So that means it goes on to DRT, and then it, then it'll get sorted out, and so then y'all, y'all see it as it kind of subsequently moves on.
Okay.
All right.
Okay. Next.
I was told that was hard a hearing, so need to raise this.
If you can wait just one second, I just want to...
Sure.
There's some commotion, people leaving.
So this request is a preliminary plat approval for a nine-lot, I'm sorry, it should say conventional subdivision. The property is located at the terminus of Arbor Drive, north of West Drake Avenue, in neighborhood conservation NC nine district. So this is a conventional subdivision comprised of approximately nine lots on two-point-two-nine acres. All lots are compliant with the use and density for the zone, as they are all at least nine thousand square feet in lots. The development, there is a administrative subdivision that is in staff review currently to consolidate the lots along West Drake Avenue. They actually go a bit aways. There's a large rear yard for both of these, and so they are consolidating it to make the lots as you see here. And then this plat won't be recorded until after the administrative subdivision is recorded. Staff has no major concerns with this request. We did receive correspondence with nearby property owners, and they were just concerned about this new development near their property and, and the potential implications of that.
Okay. Is the applicant here? Thank you. This does require a public hearing for the Arbers preliminary plat, Phase Two. If you, anyone would like to come forward and speak about this at this time?
I think this is a fairly simple question. I'm Drew Young at three ninety-six Arbor Way. I just want to make sure that this is a new subdivision for administrative purposes we have in existing. I was understanding that it was gonna be joining, it says Phase Two. I just want to make sure that there's not a whole nother neighborhood association.
Okay, I'm not sure.
Okay.
You can ask.
Okay.
Thank you, and your name and... Will you please sign in? That's what I really meant. Anyone else who would like to come forward? Yes, sir.
Hi, everyone. I'm Robin Jaffe, and I'm here for my wife and myself, E.V. Ratner. We live at five-six-two Forest Park Circle, which backs up right against this new addition. We're hoping that the choices for construction are nice houses, of course, and we do appreciate the cul-de-sac as a safety concern. You know, at this time, I'd like to request a traffic study and a drainage study of the property in question because of the impervious areas that will be added to the property. And just as an added note, I'm not, I'm sure you all have been doing this for a while now, that we have all these preliminary approvals, and then we come back and get the final approvals. It's a lot of extra work, but I know why they do it, so they can fix a lot of things before they come up with the final. So that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else who would like to speak on this agenda item? Seeing no one. Ms. Frazier, will you respond to his request for...
Based on the proposed addition to this subdivision, the existing Arbers and this propose, proposed phase, phase, it will be approximately forty lots, which is under our seventy-lot threshold, but the drainage will be evaluated during the development routine, development review team process.
Thank you. And we do feel like this is a Phase Two of an existing subdivision?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Do we have any questions for applicants or staff? Commissioners?
Move to approve preliminary plat twenty twenty-four forty-two, the Arbers Phase Two.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
So, uh, Maddick Street preliminary plat, so the request is for a preliminary plat approval for eight-lot performance residential subdivision. This accumulation of lots is located between Maddick Street and North Ross Street along Martin Avenue in Coffin First subdivision. The current land use on the existing four lots is two-family residential with a collection of duplexes. These duplexes are about a larger multifamily development to the north of the property. The applicant is seeking a preliminary plat approval for eight-performance residential lots and one open-space lot. This would be a density of six-point-four-five dwelling units an acre, and the allowed density in a performance subdivision RDD is sixteen dwelling units an acre. Performance standards for residential uses by district has a clause that exempts developments from providing open space. So this was, uh, this is what they got the interpretation on, this is kind of what the details were provided on in the staff report, and so the interpretation allowed them to not have to plat that open space, and then allow, it allowed them greater flexibility to provide more open space and green space as a result. The only significant comment in the comments is that they provide the designation for which lots are going to be either ADD, ADDUs or single-family, since there's a distinction in the FAR that allows them to provide the open space. So without a turnover, if you have any questions?
Move to approve... Oh, hold on, I'm sorry, this does require a public hearing. Oh, sorry. I'm sorry, I was still thinking of my question. This does require a public hearing. If you would like to speak to Maddick Street preliminary plat, please come forward now. Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing. Is the applicant here? Yeah. Oh.
I'm here.
Okay. Okay, I, I have a question, but it's about the open space, and it's really hard to read this plat. I'm not, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I guess it's, it's better seen on a, on a site plan.
Yes.
The question is what? I'm sorry?
So no open space will be on this right now?
No, 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 no. So no platted open space.
We have actually, we actually have more open space than is required, it's just not platted.
Okay. Okay, I understand that now, thank you. Any other questions for applicant?
Thank you.
I couldn't tell, I'm sorry. Commissioners?
Move to approve PP two oh-two-four dash oh-four-three with staff comments.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
All right, so six oh-six Pitt Street rezoning. So the recommended, so the request was a recommendation to City Council to rezone approximately one point, I'm sorry, point-one-seven acres from DDH to RDD, and the staff recommendation was denial. All right, so the subject property is slightly smaller than a fifth of an acre... All right, so, the subject property is slightly smaller than a fifth of an acre, 7,500 square feet. The property is located north of Opelika Road in the Perry subdivision at the corner of Pitt Street and Martin Avenue. Pretty much, the future land use for this is neighborhood preservation. If you look at any map, just kind of from the zoning ordinance, from the zoning map to the future land use map to the short-term rentals map, this neighborhood, this section of this neighborhood is carved out. Pitt Street as a whole is designated, is DDH, is neighborhood preservation, and does not allow short-term rentals. There is no justification for rezoning this to RDD. It would be in direct conflict with all of those plans. The ambitions of this to change the use of this is also in direct conflict with all the plans established, and there is no, there is no grounds or justification for recommending the rezoning. So, with that, staff recommended denial.
Okay. This does require a public hearing.
Yeah, and I guess just for context, I've received a number of interested people who also were opposed to this rezoner.
606 Pitt Street rezoning does require a public hearing. If you would like to come and speak about that at this time? Yes, sir.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Kiera Tarworth, Jr. I'm here to represent Ebenezer Missionary Baptist Church, which is located at 541 Pitt Street. And we are in support of the rezoning, I mean, city recommendation and denying this request. Pitt Street have been one of the most historic neighborhood in Auburn, and we'd like to keep it that way. Our church have been there, have been established in 1865 here in Auburn. And as it stands now, a lot of the area around Pitt Street have been developed for student houses and stuff. And we have noticed the increased traffic on Pitt Street on weekends, and it's difficult to get out of the church at times. So, we would appreciate if y'all would just concur with the gentlemen on this, on y'all. Excuse me. Just concur with you gentlemen who presented the presentation to deny this, please.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
If you will, please sign in.
Sir, could you please sign in?
They did, they did. Yeah. Anyone else who would like to come forward to speak on this agenda item? Okay. Oh, yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Harold Reese, and I live across the street from the property, and I've been there all my life, and I appreciate the denial. Thank you.
Will you sign in, please, sir? Thank you.
Hello?
Hi.
My name is Michael Eccles, and I own the property beside 606, I own the property at 610. I also own three other lots. The home I grew up with is on Pitt Street, and I also own a home on Pitt Street. And some of my concerns is this is an elderly neighborhood, and most of the people there, they, it drives a little number one. And we do have some children, like the grandchildren and stuff, and they come and they play. Pitt Street has no sidewalks. So, a lot of times, our kids, they're playing in the streets. And so, I have noticed that even though I don't live there, I live in Georgia, but I own the property there. And but when I come home, I notice, especially like when we're going to have a football game, a lot of traffic is coming down that road, and it's a dead-end street. And when they come down that street, they don't know it's a dead-end street. And I'm afraid that someone's going to get hurt if they come down that street. And I would really appreciate it if you denied. Thank you.
Thank you. Please sign in when you can. Good evening.
Hello, I'm Tiffany Perry. I stay at six, I mean, 521 Pitt Street. My grandparents stay at 619 Pitt Street, which is the lower part of the street where that house is located. My kids do play outside, and like everybody else said about the traffic, like people flapping down the street like it's nothing. So, I appreciate the denial as well, just because my kids are constantly going across streets to play in the empty lot.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to speak this evening? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Oh, I'm so sorry.
As the applicant, could I speak after the public hearing?
Yes. No, I'm sorry. There was another lady coming.
Hi.
Hi.
Your boy. I live at 486 Martin Avenue, which is adjacent to Pitt Street. I have been awakened at least two evenings by traffic coming down Pitt Street, attempting to turn on Martin Avenue and missing the turn and running into the property that is directly across the street from me. I think that anything else done to that subdivision would make the traffic flow and problems with traffic flow worse than it is at this point. So, I ask that you both would recommend that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? I'm sorry. This is really high, and I can barely see. Seeing no one else, I will close the public hearing for this agenda item. Applicant wishes to speak, please.
Hi there. I'm Lindsay Smith of 606 Pitt Street. I purchased the home not long ago, so I am a new resident. I have had the chance to meet several of my neighbors who have spoken today, and I understand the long and varied history there on Pitt Street, as most of them are related family passing down. I did want to correct a couple things in the e-packet that I was able to pull from Mr. Cotton. We have not had a chance to meet yet, but I did speak with your associate, John Whitlow, in detail when preparing this application. It is not my intention at all to use this property as a short-term rental. What my intention is, is to use it as a rental, either for single-family or if rezoned, or just like it is across the street, for unrelated, which could involve, as we know, students in this proximity to Auburn University. Right now, directly across the street, I do not think that there is any intention to sell that property. However, it is already zoned to allow student housing directly across the street from me. This map, the larger map, as you can see, Pitt Street is split down the middle. At some point prior to me, they decided to rezone one side of the street to allow to this residential development, but not my side of the street. I understand spot zoning is not healthy for any of the neighborhoods. So, in that regard, I'm not here to definitely contest the denial. But I did want to bring attention that we already kind of created an island effect there, where to bring my home up to code, which is necessary to both ensure it and to make it rentable, that I'm going to have to make an investment to it. And I'm going to have to appeal to people who are going to know that are directly across the street, students could live. So, that makes it harder for me to renovate and market my home as a single-family home in that regard, because there's already some split zoning in that neighborhood. The homes were built in 1950. They are full of character, but there's also a lot of opportunity to keep them from falling down politely. They are in needing of renovation to be both up to code and to be structurally sound, my home included. What I would like to ask is to open the conversation to look at this neighborhood. Originally developed in 1950 as the Perry subdivision on a very old plat map, we've already taken and put redevelopment a portion of that property, a portion of that original development. So, we've already created an island of splitting off some homes from the rest. I'm not sure that history. I would love to hear it. But also would like to be considered on my property as well, so that I can put the investment in it to bring it up to code, to make it beautiful again, would be my intention, not short-term rental, like is stated in there. I don't know if there's any other questions or anything else I could explain based on that application.
Commissioners, do you have any questions for the applicant? Okay.
What an additional conversation. How would I have that with the planning commission about this property outside of, say, the application, which may be denied or will be denied tonight? How can we further those conversations?
That would definitely start by contacting the department, planning department?
Yeah, so I don't think there is, I'm pretty sure there isn't a timeline on rezoning applications. But I mean, so I guess there's a lot of context to, I guess, how the maps came to be. A lot of the neighborhood preservation are outstanding from old lines and old neighborhoods. And so, I mean, you'll find a lot of irregularities across them where you'll find even, not just neighborhoods are split, but houses themselves are split. I mean, even on the North Gate preliminary plat that was approved earlier, there's a pretty harsh line that goes through where there's three of them on one side of the street that can rent to unrelated and three that cannot, and then the rest of them cannot. So, I guess just kind of, in this, I'll say like a lot, like before you purchased this property, a lot of this conversation was already had, and a lot of thought was put into it, and that kind of informs a lot of the lines and the future land use plan. So, there's a lot of neighborhood engagement that goes associated with a lot of these lines as well. So, I guess, while you are entitled to asking a petition for rezonings, as I said, like in my statement and in the recommendation, that there is no justification on the city side from a future land use plan standpoint, from the zoning standpoint, it just doesn't work.
Yes, sir. Thank you for the conversation. With it being future use of neighborhood conservation.
I guess, I'm sorry, I guess like the, we like, so you could call us between 7:30 and 4:30. I'm happy to talk to you after the meeting. But I guess just kind of, in this right now, it's not the time to have this conversation. We can talk after this.
Okay. Just a question on neighborhood conservation. Would the intent be that the homes are left abandoned and deteriorating until they fall down? Or would neighborhood conservation, would the intent be that they remain neighborhood homes, single-family homes?
So, the purpose of neighborhood conservation was to establish that only single-family homes could go in them as a protection from the encroachment of the university kind of pushdown to provide residences.
Which is already here. You heard from our neighbors from the traffic concerns that I have as well.
So, since I, like I said, if you would like to have a conversation about rezoning the property and future aspirations of rezoning the property, we can talk about that at another time. Right now, it's kind of not the form. I think right now, I think, you know, if you want to express just kind of where you're at, like you have, you're free to do that. But I think right now, back and forth, just kind of about what this property is zoned, we can talk about that tomorrow after this meeting.
Sounds fantastic. Any other questions for me?
No, I don't think so. Thank you for being here tonight.
Yes.
Commissioners?
I move to deny RZ 2024-007.
Second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
This request is a recommendation to city council for conditional use approval for a industrial use, that being metal fabrication. The property is located at 2117 McMillan Street in the industrial zone. This is the terminus of McMillan Street, and it also abuts property outside of the city limits. There is already existing development on site, a existing industrial development that has warehousing use for units one through six, which is already permitted through previous conditional use approvals for this address. And the newly proposed use will go in this building right here, which is approximately 20,000 square feet. So, the new use will be in the standalone smaller building. Staff recommends approval with a condition that an easement for the existing water service on the property be recorded through an administrative plat. But in that, staff has no other major concerns.
Thank you. The applicant here? Thank you. This does require a public hearing. If anyone's here to speak with KC Soul Tech, conditional use approval?
Howard Porter, 575 Lee Road, 14. I couldn't hear what the restricted language was.
The condition, the condition on it?
So, there's a condition to provide a drainage utility easement for a water line that currently serves the property and have to record through administrative plat.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to speak on this agenda item? Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing.
I'll move to approve CU 2024-031.
Second.
With the conditions?
Second. I have a motion and a second to forward to city council, recommendation for approval with conditions. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you. You're welcome. Maybe you can hear now, too. Okay. The next case is a conditional use approval for a commercial support use, specifically a warehouse RV storage facility. In addition, they are also requesting a waiver to allow metal building materials on portions of the proposed building. The property is located at 419 West Veterans Boulevard in the comprehensive development district, zoning district, this property here. Several commercial support uses have been approved in the last couple of years in close proximity of the proposed use. Commercial support uses also provide a pretty good transition in this zoning district from the commercial uses that are on South College Street in between the tech park. The concept of the proposal is fairly new to Auburn. Well, I mean, this is the first one that's been proposed in Auburn. But it is becoming a thing across the United States where several people are constructing these uses. Some of the individual units will have buildings, I'm sorry, have like mezzanines in them to where they can lounge and work on their vehicles, their, whatever vehicles they are. This proposal is for four buildings that will each be divided into individual units, 46 units. They're about 50 feet, I think they're 50 feet by 25 feet wide, if I'm not mistaken. And there will be garage doors on the internal side and also a standalone door to access each unit. Thank you. They are also requesting the waiver to have metal building materials on the sides and the rear of the property. In addition to those commercial support uses that have been granted in the last couple of years, waivers have also been approved for some of the materials. They are proposing brick along the front. And these two buildings in the middle are where the office space will be, so they look like a storefront from the street. The most visible sides that will be visible from the street of the materials would be the outermost buildings. And that could be mitigated with landscaping. But staff would be more apt of approval if they did have a compliant building material. if they did have a compliant building material on the portion of the buildings that are closer to the street and metal towards the rear. Some of the properties that received waivers earlier, those were for buildings that were set further back on their properties. And these are closer up, simply because two-thirds of the property is comprised of a stream, stream buffers, and floodplain. So rendering that portion of the development or of the property unbuildable. So that's why their buildings are closer up to the street. We do recommend approval of the use itself. And as I said, staff would be allowable to the metal materials on the buildings a certain distance back, distance back from the front.
Okay.
And I did not receive any questions on this.
But on conditional use and waiver separately?
Oh, yes. The conditional use, we do recommend approval with conditions. And those conditions are that no residential uses allowed at any time. That the vehicles are stored in the units themselves at all times and that no tailgating is allowed on-site. And I believe the applicant.
Management conflict will uphold regulations.
Right. That is correct. Okay, is the applicant here? I'm sorry. Oh, thank you. Okay, this does require a public hearing. So I'm going to go ahead and open that for the West Veterans RV Storage Conditional Use. If anyone would like to come and speak about this. Doesn't look like anybody is coming to speak to me. So we'll close the public hearing. Okay, voting separate, conditional use, waiver. Can we talk to the applicant first? Applicant, we have questions.
Hope I have.
We do too. We do too.
My question is about the materials on the ones that can be seen up front from the street from Veterans. Yes, on putting brick or stone, the acceptable materials, and then the ones you can't see? This is about the waiver.
Okay, so I guess is your question. We're absolutely proposing to put brick. I think in the, some of the renderings is painted. I don't want to, the color's not nailed down, so y'all don't get too hung up on that, but.
Yeah, the brick and the, what we have is painted.
Yes, so the front walls will match, or will meet the corridor standards. This is a good representation of what it's going to look like on all the other walls. So really every other wall that's going to be visible from the street, depending on what angle you're at passing by on Veterans. I mean, the majority of the facade of those walls is going to be these roll-up doors. And that, you know, that is what it is as far as cladding goes on the side of the building.
Well, let me get back to my question then.
Sorry.
Would you agree to have brick or whatever materials are allowed by the city on those sides that you can see from the road up front? As, as staff has said.
I guess one thing I would request in conjunction with your question, I mean, there's a number of different things we could do architecturally to this to mitigate some of that. Because of the length of some of these structures, I mean, our preference is going to be to not run brick all the way down because there's portions of it that you'll never be able to see even passing by on the street until you're inside the facility, just because of the length of it. So one of the issues I have with it, and this is personally, but because of the length of the building, it may be a little odd if we are, particularly on the two center buildings, if we're cutting off maybe a third of the way down, halfway down with a brick facade on one wall. Again, I'm not an architect, but I'd have a hard time picturing that. One thing I would throw out there, it's going to be a controlled facility. It's going to be, you know, we're going to do all the screening that we need to from the street frontage. If possible, our preference would obviously be to do, to handle some of that with landscaping. But I think there is some opportunity, particularly on the two buildings on the outside, to maybe continue wrapping it.
Can you wrap it to the first roll-up door? I mean, that's a, staff didn't give us any.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that would be an issue. The other thing that we've talked about is, again, this is kind of an architectural thing, but doing, I don't even know what it's called, stone or brick up kind of at the, at the lower. Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
So we've talked about that, doing that on the interior where the doors are also. I don't know if that, that would certainly help. But again, I think the, the pieces of the building that are going to be visible in the interior where the roll-up bays or the roll-up doors are, I'm not sure how much of a benefit we're going to get from having a different material right there because it's mostly going to be roll-up doors anyways. But again, if that's something that's a sticking point, we'll certainly consider it. Does that help?
Any other questions?
Could we go back to the planned view? From my viewpoint, I feel more comfortable because of the city requirements, the code requirements, that at least a part of that that could be visible from an angle, again, that might be three or four bays down. My other concern is what type of metal material? Is it going to be standard metal building exposed fasteners? Or is it going to be a nice architectural panel like we see on some of the, even the large manufacturing facilities down the road? You know, I think, my viewpoint, if we approve something like this, it opens up the door because this is so close, this is really close to the street. Very close compared to, so I'm not sure landscaping can achieve, from my viewpoint, what the city wants to see there.
Okay.
Compared to the others which are a good bit back from the road and not as visible.
I agree with that.
And we don't, we weren't given a ton of, of like parameters, so.
That's true. I mean, you start talking about.
Do or don't this waiver for you?
I'm with you.
Because there's no condition. There's no condition other than a waiver.
Conditions on the waiver approval?
Sure, sure.
To work with.
Staff.
To approve materials.
I believe that was actually what.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. I think that's in there.
For the waiver last time.
Yeah, because I think on the, I think it was a, it was a building that was next to the Coca-Cola building. It was like a similar thing where it was kind of left to the discretion of staff, but they were going to work with us to kind of reach a amenable solution. Yeah, and that one is, I agree, that one is set further off the road. There's more opportunity for screening, that kind of stuff. As far as, I mean, the, the final selection on building materials is obviously going to be informed by whatever we decide here at this meeting. But longer as far as the, the exact type of panel, I think what we've got in there is your standard corrugated, probably exposed fasteners. But if that's something we need to reconsider as part of condition of the waiver request approval, then I'm certain we could do that. I think we're probably going to be.
They were just requesting what can be seen from the street.
Yeah, and I understand that. And if we need to develop some additional views with working with staff, once we get into it, I think we can do that to determine where that line is. But I think that primarily the, the best application of that, in my opinion, is going to be on the, the two buildings that are on the outside, those outside walls. Because again, I'm just not sure what we're going to be able to, how much it's going to accomplish on the interior.
Yeah, well, thank you for being amenable to that.
Not a problem. Anything else?
Thank you. Okay, doesn't look like it. You're good. Commissioners?
Move to approve the waiver.
With?
With conditions.
With the condition that. You work with staff?
We work with staff to determine what is visible and what is not from the road.
And, and the materials used.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, here we go. Recommendation for. Okay, somebody else make that motion. I'm going to make the motion for conditional use. I move to approve the conditional use.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor for the conditional?
With the conditions of the, for the conditional use as well?
Yes, with conditions.
With conditions for the building materials.
No, wait, 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 wait. For the conditional use, there are conditions that there are no overnight stays and there are no.
Oh, we're talking at first.
We're doing the conditional use with, with staff recommendation, recommended conditions.
There we go, thank you.
We were doing the waiver.
We were, but I retract that, so.
I have a motion and a second to approve with conditions the conditional use. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thanks, we still have a waiver. Anyone?
How, how do you want it worded?
This, right above conditions, it says some lovely language. Right there. Oh, where is it? Okay.
I move to approve the waiver with the following conditional approval, dealing with buffer yards, parking, lighting, building materials to mitigate the impact of the proposed conditional use on the surrounding property.
We'll take it. We'll take it.
Jennifer, second. I have a motion and a second on the waiver approval with conditions to work with staff. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Great job, everybody.
All right.
This is a request for recommendation to city council for conditional use approval for industrial use being manufacturing. The property is located at 2300 Pumphrey Avenue, Unit E, in the industrial zoning district and the Auburn Industrial Park. There is, again, an existing industrial development on site where a majority of the development is used for warehousing and distribution, which was already approved for prior conditional use approvals. And this new request will be housed in the smaller building, Unit E, which is 6,600 square feet. Staff has no concerns with this request. It is light industrial use and recommends approval.
With no special conditions?
There are no special conditions, no.
Okay, any questions for staff? Okay. This does require a public hearing for conditional use for Pumphrey Avenue, Unit E. If anyone would like to speak about this item. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Commissioners?
Move to approve conditional use 2024-33.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Hello? This next request is for conditional use approval for a performance residential development, cottage housing development, as well as various commercial and entertainment uses that we'll cover in just a moment. The property is in the redevelopment district zoning district. It encompasses four parcels that total approximately two and a half acres. And the property has frontage on both Judd Avenue and Richland Road. The site plan shows 16 cottage housing units, a cluster of 12 on the north side of the property and a cluster of four towards the south. And those units will take access from Judd Avenue. And to the west is an 8,000 square foot commercial building that will access Richland Road. And there is a sidewalk here that connects the two, the residential and the commercial portions. Here is a list of the commercial and entertainment uses that have been requested by the applicant. Staff is agreeable to the majority of them. There are a couple that we recommend are stricken from a recommendation for approval. And those are, that is for a funeral home and for a private club. We believe that these have the potential to create undue adverse effects to neighboring properties. And the applicant also requested approval for the all others use, which we recommend be denied as well, just because that would require, or that would allow any commercial and entertainment use to be up on the property without your review. The applicant has requested a waiver to the special development standard for cottage housing development that the net floor area of each unit shall not exceed one and a half times the area of the main level. This standard was put into effect to ensure the cottage housing units were constructed in a way that, you know, to ensure the customary design of the cottage housing units. They're typically, they're meant to be smaller units than a typical single-family home. The example that I referenced in the staff report, the site plan shows a, for the northern cluster here, a building footprint of approximately 760 square feet. This would, the zoning ordinance requirement of one and a half would allow an upper floor of 380 square feet for a total of 1,140 square feet. And staff recommends if you do, if you were to approve a waiver, to allow it to exceed no more than 1.75 times, to exceed, to not exceed that. So for the previous, previous example, that would allow an upper floor of 570 square feet. It would just give them a little more square footage for their unit. Staff recommends approval of the conditional uses with the conditions that the private, or the private club and the funeral home and all others are stricken. And the waiver up to 1.75 times. And just condition that all other special development standards should apply.
Any questions? Thank you. Is the applicant here? Thank you. This does require a public hearing. Going to go ahead and open the public hearing at this time for the Judd Avenue mixed-use conditional use. If anyone would like to speak on this agenda item.
To the commission, I'm Ernest Griggs. I live at 598 Richland Road, which I say I lived there, but this is actually where my church is, which this property borders on the south and east of our church. For 25 years, the property to the south of our church was vacant. It was eyesore. It was bad. We even had a tree that fell from that property that kissed our church and cost us quite a bit of money on the front part of our church there. The property, that property and also the property to the east of us were both owned by previous church members who've owned this, all are deceased now. But the property is precious to us because of who lived there and the way it was when they lived there. So for 25 years, there's nobody been there. This development company has come in and they want to enhance our neighborhood. And we, as a church body, shout as a blessing to God by faith, which is 598 Richland Road, we are encouraged by it. We love to see it go forward. One, we welcome, we welcome the neighbors. Two, it helps us as Christians to live out what the Bible tells us to do, "Go ye therefore in the world and create, make disciples." We offer them an opportunity to do something that the people that lived there before can walk out of their door, come right across the parking lot, and come to church. Then have to wait for the church bus, then have to drive four miles around town and especially this wonderful Auburn traffic that we have here to get to church. And also, church, church operates on three things, noses, nickels, and numbers. Noses, nickels, and numbers. The noses and the numbers have to be in the church. And that also brings a nickel. So it's an asset to us. Also, our property value. We don't want anything to come in there to make our property value down or lose its value or really just look bad. The property behind us, there was a great outcry before they built that, but I remember when that was a hole in the ground back there. I remember when that looked rough back there, but now it's a beautiful place. I remember when that looked rough back there, but now it's a beautiful place. We get along good. We've, we even did a little parade through that neighborhood not too long ago after vacation in Bible school, and they came out and applauded us. We've invited them to be a part of our congregation, just like we do in a place there. So it's an upgrade for our neighborhood, and it's a positive for us as a church. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Please sign in, if you haven't. Public hearing on this agenda item. Anyone else like to speak about this? Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing. Commissioners, we have two things to vote on again.
I move that we approve the conditional use of, yeah, excuse me, I, I move that we approve case CU 2024-036, cottage housing development.
With conditions.
With the conditions. And that includes eliminating...
Wait, we got to do the waiver separate. Right? Oh, no, that's separate. You're right, you're right. Sorry.
Then includes eliminating those three uses noted by staff here.
Yes.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to forward to city council with a recommendation of approval with conditions. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Waiver?
I move to approve the waiver.
To allow the net floor area of each cottage housing unit to exceed no more than 1.75 times the area of the main level.
Yes. Precisely.
I have a motion and a second on the waiver. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Sorry, I have to block you off.
Do it, no, it's fine.
I'll, I'll put it down. Alright, this is one of four requests for this proposed development site. This current request is for annexation of approximately 3.8 acres into Auburn city limits. The property is located at the southeast corner of East Farmville Road and is directly adjacent to US Highway 280. Subject property, as you can see, is outside the city limits currently and would receive rural upon annexation. However, this property is also the subject of the subsequent rezoning request, plural, and conditional use request that will be coming before you. This site meets all our annexation requirements, therefore staff recommends approval of this request.
Is the annexation, commissioners, does not have a public hearing? Any questions?
I'll move to approve case AX 2024-023 Farmville Mixed Use Annexation.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Alright, this is the second request for this development site, proposed development site. And it is for a request for rezoning of that same lot that you just saw from the rural zoning district to the development district housing, otherwise known as DDH. The rezoning request shows the intent of the applicant to rezone the property that was just annexed to DDH, which would match the base zoning of the property just north of it. It's about 10 acres, which would round out the future development site. This portion of the subject property up for rezoning is majority in the gateway commercial future land use designation, and I wanted to include that the portion that is designated limited, low-density residential is not going to be developed with any type of housing or commercial space. So most of the conversation around future land use will go towards gateway commercial since that will house future development. This request to rezone, when reviewed on its own merits, conflicts with the DDH because it does contain a future commercial site. However, the subsequent rezoning request would apply the planned development district overlay to the property, and it would allow a master development plan to be approved, which would get rid of any inconsistencies that exist between the, exist, the zoning of DDH and the future land use of gateway commercial. So with all that being said, staff is recommending approval of this rezoning request.
You answered my question. I had a question, you answered it. Thank you. Okay, this is a rezoning to DDH for Farmville Mixed Use. It does require a public hearing. Would like to open the public hearing at this time.
I'm Becky Thornton. We live across the way on 320 Flagstone, so we back up to this property. I guess our one concern, I guess, is commercial as far as traffic, lights, noise. There is a large guardrail off of 280, so access off of 280 is kind of limited because of that, and so feed off of, turning it off of Farmville. The strip on Farmville is also short. There are traffic roads, you can see where they...
Two more different things, and you'll see the overall? And I didn't know if that would be helpful.
Well, I know, I know it's serious, 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 but I'm just saying, I mean, as far as all that goes, you know, the traffic, the guardrail, the noise, the lights, I mean, I don't know, it's 14 acres. There's a lot they could put there. Granted, we don't want something ungodly, but you know, we don't want a bunch of light shining through our trees either. So, anyway, that's all.
Thank you. Public hearing, anyone else who'd like to come forward? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, rezoning, number one.
Move to approve RZ 2024-008.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Alright, this third request takes into account the whole development site, and it is a request to apply the planned development district overlay designation to approximately 14.17 acres with the base zoning of development district housing, or DDH. The proposed area includes, like you see in red, the 3.79 acre property that was just approved for annexation and the subsequent rezoning to DDH, as well as the approximately 10.2 acres that is currently zoned DDH to the north of that property. All in all, it makes up the 14.17. And like mentioned before, the future land use designation for the majority of the property and all of the property that will be developed will be gateway commercial. The approved, with, additionally, the approval of the PDD's master development plan would constitute the conditional use approval for all performance residential uses within that MDP. So you can see in the blue and in the pink, it includes the proposed townhomes and multifamily units. That would total to 80 total performance residential units, 68 of which would be townhouse lots, and 12 would be multifamily units. The maximum gross density for a performance development in DDH as the base zone would be 5.5 dwelling units per acre, so this would allow the property to have about 77, well, exactly 77 maximum dwelling units. The applicant has requested, with this being a PDD, an incentive to increase 10% of the density allowed in the base zoning, and that would make the maximum gross density 6.05 dwelling units per acre, which would bring the allowable density up to allow for the proposed 80 units on, in the MDP to be developed. In exchange for this incentive, the applicant proposes putting a 20-foot vegetative buffer around the entirety of the property, not just the residential portion of the property. In addition, the property's proposed commercial space that is shown in the MDP will be the subject of the subsequent conditional use request to apply or to decide the array of uses that would be allowed. The request to apply the PDD overlay combined with the request to rezone the property to DDH would make the proposed development compatible with the gateway commercial future land use designation. Therefore, staff is approving this rezoning request with some conditions, and I can go into detail. So the first would be in regards to the 20-foot vegetative buffer. As it currently exists, the vegetative buffer is only around the residential portion of the property, and we would require it to extend all the way around the commercial portions as well, so that it encompassed the whole property. Second, these buffer yards, when calculating open space for the residential lots, any buffer yard located within a private lot, so anything that you see drawn in with the buffer yard that is in the blue, you can kind of see at the very top with these townhouse lots, those would not be allowed to be counted towards the open space requirements for the residential portion, which is 30%. Currently, the applicant satisfies the open space by about .2 acres, so that isn't a concern for us, but we wanted to make that a condition as a plat is coming forth. Third, buffer yards that cross privately owned lots, like I just pointed out, would need to be put in an easement that would be held by the homeowners association. And fourth, if the buffer yards were to be destroyed or the HOA to be inactive, then the maintenance would go to the individual property owners where that easement was located on their lot. So again, we are recommending approval with those conditions.
Okay, this does require a public hearing for Farmville Mixed Use PDD. I'd like to open the public hearing at this time. Please come forward to the podium.
My question is this, I know the city wants in and out on every neighborhood, but those two dead-end streets that end into our property, and a dead-end street into our property is just going to be somebody trying to turn around, come across the property lines, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I know y'all want in, and you want a second way out of every neighborhood, but can those not go there? That's my question. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for the public hearing at this time? Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing. Actually, I had the same question as she did about the dead, stubouts, uh-huh, because I was trying to figure out that road, if it, if it came over.
We would consider the stubouts to future development. It's a large parcel. If it's ever redeveloped, we would love for that to connect through. When Tuscany Hills initially came in, before this property, at the end of Flagstone was developed, that road actually came through. So this is just more akin to what the original, original master plan was.
Okay, okay.
So the intent is basically, if ever...
If ever.
If ever it sells the large property, then we might make use of it.
Yes.
Okay.
Could you still put in a, around, you know, just a...
Temporary turnaround?
Yeah.
Yes.
Pull the sack there instead, because you can open it back up and lay her fares. Yeah, I think it should be a condition.
Well, of the PDD, or...
It'll also be coming soon for a preliminary plat, so that's something that we can work with the applicant.
So, thank you. So we're just doing PDD right now, yeah. Commissioners?
Move to approve RZ 2024-009 Farmville Mixed Use PDD with conditions.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Fourth and final request for this development site is a request for conditional use approval for various potential uses, including institutional, office, commercial and entertainment, road service, nurseries, and commercial support uses located at the same property, at the corner of East Farmville Road. This is a list of the, the extended list, broken down of everything that the applicant is requesting. Subject property has the base zone of DDH with a PDD overlay and future land use of the gateway commercial. And the applicant is proposing down on this very southeast corner to input an approximately 12,000 square foot, 12,000 square foot of commercial space, with the applicant stating that it would be developed as demand requires. Staff believes that the proposed uses, all proposed uses, as part of the master development plan are consistent with the assigned designations. Therefore, we recommend approval of this request with conditions.
So there's none, you'd like to take off of that.
We did not identify any.
Okay.
And the conditions, the four that you just approved for the planned development district, we have applied to this conditional use request as well.
Okay.
As, as well as just applying the corridor overlay regulation conditions and a drive-through use needing approval from the city manager and DRT approval.
That was my next question. Okay, so it doesn't come with a drive-through at this point?
No.
Okay, thank you. This conditional use, Farmville Mixed Use, does require a public hearing. We'll open the public hearing at this time. If anyone would like to speak on this agenda item. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Commissioners?
Move to forward the conditional use to city council with a recommendation for approval with conditions.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Okay, the next request before you is a conditional use approval for a community shopping center. The property is located within the Moores Mill PDD. It is at the corner of Moores Mill Road and Ogletree Road. The Ogletree Village Shopping Center is located within Area A of the Moores Mill PDD. It's just under 48 acres, and within this area have been approved a neighborhood shopping center, performance residential development, which includes multiple unit development, twin homes and townhomes, as well as an assisted living facility. And over the years, the neighborhood shopping center has been approved for approximately 193,000 square feet of commercial space. The zoning ordinance caps a neighborhood shopping center at 100,000 square feet, so this request is simply to reclassify that shopping center to a community shopping center. It does not include any different approvals than what are already allowed there or any additional square footage, and staff recommends approval.
Thank you. This does require a public hearing, conditional use Ogletree Village Shopping Center. If anyone would like to come forward and speak about this agenda item, please do so. Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing. Commissioners?
Move to forward to city council with a recommendation for approval, conditional use 2024-38.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Alright, so, CAFER racer build material waiver request, so actual request was a waiver to the exterior build materials requirements. Alright, so, subject properties contain a total of approximately 1.17 acres. Property, our property is located at the southeastern corner of intersection of Up Lake Road and North... Properties are located at the southeastern corner of intersection of Opelika Road and North Gate Street. So, this is zoned CRD, yeah, CRDU. And this says, pretty stringent and explicit corridor exterior overlay standards. And so, pretty much, just kind of outlined in kind of the staff report. I think my opinion of and my interpretation of it was if the ordinance had been silent, just kind of on what it was going to look like, if there'd been, I'd say that that would mean there'd be leeway, just kind of open to interpretation. I think also just kind of akin to some of the other waivers that we have approved or recommended for regarding exterior building materials were in different zoning districts. And I mean, in entirely different places where the character was industrial buildings, where I mean, that's kind of more the aesthetic of what they're doing, and also the purposes and what the building looks like. But just kind of at this corner, which is a high-traffic corner, one of the main corridors in the downtown that people see, and then also just an extension of the downtown as well. And I feel just kind of with how explicit the standards were, just kind of regarding what the exterior building materials can be, that's why I recommend it now. So, if you want to go to the visuals, the applicant did submit visuals in addition to this, but pretty much, if we could zoom in on the top right, which is like the main blue panel, in the corner, top right corner. Yeah, no, no, like top right corner of the page, not the building. Keep going up. Just kind of over. No, 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 like over to like the colors, the colors.
The colors.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah, 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 yeah. All the way up. All right, and so, just kind of how we were kind of talking about earlier, just kind of associated with the other building. So, these will be metal panels, and I, you know, with respect to them, like, you know, this is different. This isn't just fasteners exposed. But the ordinance is explicit about this cannot be used in excess beyond accent and trim. It prefers, it has a very clear color palette, has a very clear what the materials can be, and this is the epitome of what it says should not be used in excess. I even Googled it because I admit, I am not an architect. So, yeah, so that was why, just kind of based on my interpretation. Had the ordinance, like I said, been silent on it, I think it'd been a different outcome. But with it just kind of being explicit and very detailed about what is allowed from a material standpoint, and how much of that material can be used where, I did not feel that it should be allowed, so I recommended it now. So, of that, turn over to you for any questions.
This does not require a public hearing, so Commissioners, we can have. I do have a question as well. So, is it material, or is it colors, or is it both?
Yeah, so, I think like in the downtown, like the colors, there's like a downtown color palette, but I think that's like the, I want to, man, I don't want to misspeak. I feel like that's just the urban core, and this isn't that. This is just material spaces, and so it was just much more on like the metals and things like that.
Okay, any other questions? And the applicant is here, so.
So, you can kind of see, Brett Vasquen with the Forsyth Group. In regards to materials, yes, it's metal. This particular metal is actually more expensive than doing it brick. This is part of their brand. All of their buildings, even in downtown Athens, are the same. Higher-end metal panels with the colors. As you can see, a majority of the front, which is essentially the part in the back that is majority metal panels, is where the kitchen and everything is at. The front area, that's all glass for the most part, is the front. That's where people, that's the only place for the customers to interact, along with, there's a large lawn outside as well. So, yeah, I think, just to clarify, it's not the colors that we're here about. It's the building materials specifically. So, with it being part of their brand, they would prefer to use the higher-end metal panels for the building materials. And so, we know it's a waiver request, and so we figured we would come and ask. I think there's another, so, yeah, so you have, this is the view. If you were looking from the intersection of, at the top, would be the view from the intersection of Gay and Opelika Road. The view from the, in the bottom here, in the back, that's the view from the woods that nobody would ever see. That's where the overgrown swamp is, okay?
And the drive-through.
To the other one, yeah, and the drive-through. The drive-through is just a metal cupboard, just no different than Chick-fil-A, right? Where the people who are interacting with the customers, serving the customers are in the cupboard. The top picture there, that would be the backside that, if you were at the frontage of Opelika Road and Max Credit Union looking back, that would be your view from that side. And then the bottom angle would be as if you're kind of viewing from the post office side of the building, looking in. So, the metal part is in the back. The front, like I said, is all open air and glass. So, happy to answer any questions, if you have any. All right, thank you.
What are the materials approved?
What are the approved materials? Yeah, so, building facades and accessory buildings visible to the pedestrian vehicle or traffic shell consists of natural materials such as wood, stone, manufactured products such as bricks, stucco, architecturally decorative, concrete blocks, single-lap horizontal semiticious siding with offsetting vertical joints, maximum seven-inch exposure, semiticious simulated cedar shake exposure on shake, or other such materials as may be approved after the review by the planning commission. And all structural materials, i.e. columns for vehicle canvies, shall be in clad or in one of the more same materials as the building facades. Exposed metal with architectural metal finishes, alakubon, don't know if that's how you say it, or similar type materials may only be used as architectural trim and accents. So, like I said, very explicit.
So, could I paint brick black?
Yes.
Oh, you're the applicant. I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am. I really just wanted to elaborate on a little bit on what Brett mentioned. So, yeah, these are, and pardon me, my name is Brad Gallon. I'm with CAF Eraser. I've been in front of you guys, I guess, toward the end of last year and earlier this year. But as Brett mentioned, these are very much part of our brand, in our opinion. And we are not McDonald's, we are not Chick-fil-A, but this is part of our golden arches, if you will. This is who we are. We've had some conversations on another build in Athens, you know, with the founder, and I pointed out the fact that if we were to go masonry, if we were to go with something that was not these pretty heavy-duty, heavy-quality corrugated panels, they would be less expensive. And he said, no, Brad, this is our brand. This is who we are. Again, Brett did a great job of, I think, pointing out everything I'm going to point out, so I'm not going to reiterate it. But in large part, what's front-facing here is glass, exposed steel, wooden rafters. This is the backside of the building. But again, we just ask for your approval and consideration here.
Thank you. Commissioners?
I'm going to make a motion.
Okay.
I'm going to make a motion to deny the waiver for 2024-011.
Second.
Thank you. Motion and a second, so it's on the floor. So, you feel like they can achieve this color scheme with different materials?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. For denial, which is what is proposed. Roll call please.
Nonna Reese?
Yes.
Dana Kemp?
Yes.
Phil Chancellor?
Yes.
David Wisdom?
No.
Wendy Birmingham?
Yes.
Joseph A. Strupp?
Yes.
Jennifer Stevens? Walker Davis?
Yes.
Seven to one.
Thank you. Okay, that is the last of our agenda item. No communications.
Oh, no, I do have communications. I was going to say, if you have any communications, you can go first.
I do not have any communications at this time.
All right, cool, cool, cool. All right, we're going to have to go back to the H&amp;G Staples one and just get clarity on the vote. And so, we'll need a motion in the affirmative is all, and then just have y'all vote on that.
We're going back to-
H&amp;G Staples to have a-
H&amp;G.
Yeah, to have a vote in the affirmative. Since ever since, like it was, it passed on, the motion was to deny, and then five people voted against that motion to deny. And so, just for clarity purposes, we need a motion in the affirmative, and then people to affirm their vote.
Okay.
Well, I'll renew my motion to approve preliminary plat 2024-41.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Let's just do the roll call. Let's just do the roll call.
Roll call please.
Nonna Reese?
Yes.
Dana Kemp?
Yes.
Phil Chancellor? David Wisdom?
Yes.
Wendy Birmingham?
No.
Joseph A. Strupp?
No.
Jennifer Stevens?
Yes.
Walker Davis?
No.
Five to three.
All right, there you go. Thank y'all. Okay, so then, just kind of on the other items. Like I said, at the packing lunch, I'm going to send y'all an email, just kind of getting y'all's schedules just for two upcoming work sessions. One's project-specific, that's going to be later in the year, and then one has to do with the PUD regulations. So, we're going to meet one time, we're going to meet another time as a staff, and just kind of go over and make sure there's clarity on our side, just kind of what's in it. And then, we will meet with y'all, and that way y'all can have the first view of what is in the PUD regulations before they go to council. And then y'all, like I said, that'll be a full work session. You guys get opinions, you know, input. It's a two-way street. It's not just kind of, this is what they're going to be. Like I said, this is what we're presenting to y'all, kind of what we've thought through, and then any questions y'all may have, and any input, things that y'all want included, that would be an opportunity to do so. So, I think currently, just kind of as is, it might be later September, or it might not be like early October. But the goal is to schedule that PUD work session with y'all soon, so.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, folks. I do have an announcement as well.
Oh.
We do, to your left, we have a new member of our planning department.
Hi.
Seven. Didn't want to cut you on the spot, but you may have noticed a new gentleman to you. So, yeah, just wanted, I know that he's here, and happy to have him.
And what's his name?
Maybe you can introduce yourself?
My name's-
Seven Whitest. That's my name.
The microphone went out. I'm sorry.
Oh, not to bullshit. Oh, my name's Seven Whitest.
Nice to meet you. Thank you for doing that introduction. Okay, thank you. So, please move.
Second.
All those in favor?